We will start, we got one item, folks.
Yay, our favorite thing.
Yay, the thing that excites you guys.
Alright, so, two items tonight. I think that the time estimates for these are pretty close, so I am going to keep us just for the twenty minutes for the system development charges. Unless we're almost to the end, but otherwise if you want to cover the system development charges compensation in twenty minutes, and then use the rest of the time for the monthly utility bills. And I have a very, very general PowerPoint that's more just to guide our conversation. So if you want to go to the next one. Um, so we'll. Oh, whoops, I don't, that's okay. Uh, so yeah, we haven't talked by fifty to talk about this. But really, at the last study session, we did talk about system development charges. Uh, at that time, you guys had asked staff to make a proposal, bring it back to you. And we received feedback, so that's what we've done here. Um, the system development charges for water, sewer, and stormwater are in front of you on the eleven by seventeen sheet of paper, and we're emailing that to you today as well. Um, so I'll just kind of walk through this spreadsheet. For each one of these, just as a reminder, you really just have one system development charge for each utility. And then it's multiplied out based off the ERUs to calculate the rest of these rates. So when you're looking at the water system development charge, all that we're asking you to look at is that first row for one ERU for a three-quarter inch meter. All the rest of those dollar amounts in the rows below are based off, um, three-quarter inch meter with an ERU of one. Um, and then as a reminder, as part of the utility rate study, Kevin, our consultant at HCR, went through and calculated the legal maximum allowable for each one of these utilities, that's what's shown in red here. Uh, so starting with the water system development charge. Right now, we're at fifty percent of the max allowable. I know it sounds like in previous conversations, we were comfortable jumping up to the hundred percent max allowable for water system development charge. So what I laid out here was a fifteen percent increase year over year, uh, through twenty twenty-eight, which would then be ninety, ninety-five percent of the maximum. And then in twenty twenty-nine, we would increase by five percent up to a hundred percent of the maximum. Uh, and if it's not clear to you on your spreadsheet, that's kind of the second row right under the proposed rate. Uh, do we? Sorry, did I sum that question? Uh, the reason for the fifteen percent increase is generally that's what we're looking at for the revenue increase that we're wanting from the monthly water utility rates, which is how I then selected fifteen percent to recommend for the system development charge if we are going to do that over three years. Sewer is very similar. Sewer, we did use, so water, if you remember, we increased, I think by twenty-five percent, I think we were previously at twenty-five percent of the maximum. And then for twenty twenty-five, we increased by another twenty-five percent to get us to fifty percent of the maximum. We didn't touch sewer or stormwater system development charge. That's why they say approximately fifty percent of the max, there's like fifty point four percent, I think quite close for sewer. Um, but same thing, this shows the max allowable and has a fifteen percent increase year over year with a five percent increase between twenty twenty-eight and twenty twenty-seven. And then on the backside of your paper, the storm part is currently at about seventy percent of the max allowable. And so this shows, uh, doing a fifteen percent increase from twenty-five point six, fifteen percent increase from twenty-six to twenty-seven. And then that would bring us up to a hundred percent of the max allowable. On all of these, you'll see there's some asterisks behind them, my recommendation would be that we have an inflation factor based off the specific CPI that we use at the city for each one of these, in addition to what you're seeing here. So that way, we're keeping up with inflation and not having inflation factored into these.
So does that, does that maximum get an inflation factor already built with it?
It doesn't, and that's why, so it's shown in red, it's in twenty twenty-five dollars, that can have an inflation factor on it.
Does, it does not.
It does not currently, it's showing twenty-five dollars.
Well, my question was basically the same, that we don't run a fallup. In twenty twenty-nine, when we're at a hundred percent, we had to run a fallup being over, if within, with inflation applied, we're not going to be over the maximum allowed.
No, the conversation's with Kevin, that max allowable is adjusted each year. But this is a simple way, instead of going back and re-capping each year, we could just add that inflation factor on year over year. And then, um, yeah, I guess we're only talking to twenty twenty-nine, but year over year, that would be the recommendation is, okay, now that we brought these up for max allowable, we have an inflation factor year over year to just keep up with that.
If, if the calculation for the maximum level is not just current condition plus inflation, then do we need to have a, like a periodic update, uh, check and make sure we're not out of whack?
I think we typically do on like a six or ten year cycle. Um, yeah, speak to when this was done before this, but I think it, I think it had been quite a while. And I know the system development charges hadn't been touched since, I want to say it's before twenty twelve.
Yeah.
Or at least that's when it changed. Oh, let's see, I can't exactly remember, but they haven't been updated for many years. Um, and I guess big picture too, not to add more, but we do have a water system plan that's in draft form and a sewer system plan that's just been started. That is data that will eventually be incorporated into this as well, so. This is always a work in progress, but as of now, this is the best data we've had, and this is what we would recommend. Um, what other questions do you have?
Will you remind me when these system development charges are incurred?
Yeah, this is when someone is paying to connect into our utility system.
So it's essentially when somebody's building, building a new residence.
Yes.
So they would pay all three of these charges, whatever year it is.
If they're in the city limits, we do have like outside city limits, uh, but in the UGA, we do have people who will just pay water, uh, for example, but water, obviously paid by any water customer, sewer is paid by any sewer customer, and then stormwater is paid by any sewer customer.
Why is that? Do you know?
Uh, the purpose for that is it's the impact of the system, uh, for anyone who's generating stormwater within city limits, so sewer generally, generally, we don't have uh, sewer customers outside too.
Yeah, I understand that, I'm just wondering why it's connected to, why, stormwater is connected to sewer, because.
Well, it's paid whether or not you're physically connected to the system, it's your impact to our system. So even if you have to retain on site, you're still required to pay the system development charge.
Right, no, I understand that, and I just think about stormwater, our problem is used for stormwater citywide. And if there's people who live in the UGA, and they're getting water, but they're not getting sewer, they're still driving city streets to get to their property. So I'm, I'm just questioning why storm is connected to sewer.
Well, we also wouldn't maintain any sewer, sorry, any.
Any stormwater infrastructure.
Yeah.
Okay.
It generally isn't charged that would be applied in city limits is probably the best way to put that, but I know in the code, it does specifically talk about being applied to any sewer right there.
Are there specific? So in talking about the system development charges as well as the rates over, over time, as we're going to be looking through what looks like twenty twenty-nine here. Are there specific capital improvement projects that these significant increases are tied to that will get us to a specific point? Because otherwise, I would say, well, why are we trying to get this done in four years? Can we extend this out to in, increase our charges so that it's more palatable and it actually doesn't deter people from developing in the city?
So the biggest thing, as Kevin has outlined, is the purpose of the system development charge is one, to pay for the existing capacity that's already in the system. So that's ultimately, uh, sheltering the current customers from paying for additional increases that are necessary to need to build. Um, and then the other piece is to, and I wrote it on here too, like the bullet points at the top, but to help fund future expansion for handling growth. Um, ultimately, this is a policy direction, I can make a recommendation, but it's up to you if you feel like we need a lever either direction on development. The other piece with that too, though, um, is that when we do have a new customer come in, and I know we've all picked on, I think it's now called Autumn, Autumn Humps, but what was Levon R. Meadows, the new apartment complex? Uh, we're basically, if you're looking at the max allowable versus what they pay here, losing money that they could have paid if we had higher system development charges. So part of that is balancing increasing closer to that maximum, and the maximum, I think this may be a bad word to be using for it. Yes, it is the maximum that we could be paying, that is the actual calculated amount of what the impact to a new connection to the system costs. It's just that we can't charge more than that, so we call it the maximum, but I think it's a little bit misleading when we say that's the maximum we could charge them. In reality, that is the calculated cost of what the, the cost for that connection is.
Gotcha, so at this point, we're just losing money. We're not covering our costs because we haven't increased our rates since two thousand. That's a better way of looking at it.
Yeah. Yeah, you've explained it to me twice, and I still get a little visceral response when I see that maximum on there. There's no way of changing the wording, I mean, it's, it's not something I won't have to defend if somebody is actually paying attention to reading it, you know?
Yeah, absolutely, and I think that's an industry term in talking with Kevin, but I'm very happy to change it on our documentation, so it's clear, that is the calculated amount.
It's calculated in the word, the system.
That makes me less upset about it.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, why do you have to be at the math, right?
Yeah, that has impacts to real people, it's important, so.
Well, the fact that we have to, I mean, we have to make these decisions based on years of, you know, previous, you know, councils that.
Defirmant.
Yeah, deferment, like, you know, it sucks for us too, but ultimately, we have to do what we think is right for the future.
Well, and I think what you said about setting the context regarding these, this game plan is meant to shelter existing ratepayers from adding more because development is happening.
Yeah. And I, I think I've said this in previous meetings, uh, in our budget, we do account for some, uh, system development charges, but generally, we can't bank on this unless we know that we have permits that are in, that people are going to be paying soon. So this more does become some of our buffer in those enterprise funds and things of the sort.
And unfortunately, again, we're, we are playing a little bit of catch-up. And unfortunately, again, two of the biggest projects that we have or will have got this underneath, you know, so we've already lost the opportunity to recapture some of what could have been, maybe should have been, but, I mean, just like, you know, we talked about this in terms of inclusion areas only. You know, we lost our opportunity with two big projects to, to institute something that was mandatory, but uh, again, that's all about the bridge in the past and can't be changed, but moving forward for.
Andy, you have one more question, uh, so just going back to the, the stormwater.
Yeah.
So if, if somebody is required to put a catch basin on their property, a dry well, whatever, and, and contain all of their stormwater on their own site, they are still required to pay stormwater development charge. Uh, and why is that?
Um, it is ultimately because all development in the city has impact through our system, they are, I think it's the hundred years, so they're required to retain on site. Yeah, so I, I think it is the hundred years, so they're probably like the on-site. But they still do have impact for our stormwater system, so even though they're retained on-site, we still have to have our roads, uh, to be able to accommodate stormwater in that area. Um, I had another thought, but now I'm not remembering it, sorry. Um, oh, that was, that's what I was thinking, uh, there are, I don't think it's, no, no, never mind, that's the monthly rate. The monthly rate is broken out, um, high, high, medium, and low impact. And so their monthly rate does vary based off if they have onsite retention or not specifically, or otherwise, I think right now for residential, we're like six dollars, roughly six dollars and twenty-five cents a month.
But so it is accounted for in the, in the rate, the day, the monthly rate of what, where they have a catch. I was just thinking of somebody, you know, like two neighbors, one is actually connected to the potential stormwater system, but that we don't have yet, really. And the other one's not, and they both pay the same amount, it seems like the one that has, one had to put the infrastructure in on their site to manage it, and then also pay the same rate, but we've accommodated that in.
As a monthly rate, and, and it is a relatively new thing that we started charging the system development charge for storm, stormwater. It used to only be if you were connecting to the system, but generally speaking, we don't allow people to do that, uh, just based off our structure. So it is relatively new, but yeah, the, the purpose is so they're actually paying for the system that's in place and serves them.
Okay.
Even if it's indirectly.
Uh, one more question.
Please.
So when you are, say, re-developing in, in fill developments, uh, tearing down an existing home, I know previously, I believe it's still the case that the development charges are different because you're not, you're not adding a new connection, you're just reusing an old one, so that, that's still going to be the same?
Yeah, so if someone tears down a single-family home and they're yielding a single-family home, they're not gaining system development charges. Now, if someone tears down a single-family home and puts in a home in A D U, and say the eighty is under nine hundred feet, so they only need one connection. Sometimes people will choose to increase from a three-quarter inch to a one-inch, for example. And then they essentially pay the difference between the three-quarter inch and the one-inch. So we're like, okay, you bought into this three-quarter inch fund, you're now just paying wherever it is on here, but if you're in the twenty-six rate, so we're proposing like six thousand dollars is what you're paying in your system development charge, the differential between the two.
Thanks, I just want to make sure that's not changing.
Yeah, absolutely, what other questions are there?
So I'd add a question, I'm looking at, you know, so water for a three, for a three-quarter inch ERU, this year coming up twenty-six, eight thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars and fifty cents, that's for, that's the, that's the development, the development charge for the water, alright. So as you add all that up, what they're going to pay is around, for everything is thirteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars. Just to have services.
Just to have services.
What is that compared, do we know what that's compared to what was, like what people were paying back last, this, this year? Is that, can I just look at, look at the twenty-five rate, sound, sound me?
If you look at the twenty-five rate, that's what people are currently paying. The water before this was about half of what it is now, so about thirty-three hundred dollars less than it was for this year.
Okay.
That makes sense.
Sure, yeah. Okay.
So it's basically a fifteen percent increase total, because one of those is going up.
From this year.
Okay.
I want to.
Yeah, Sharon, please.
Um, reestablish a complaint.
About multi.
Don't do me any good, but I have to stand anyway. On the, um, water rates for, between the multifamily and, um, the rest of us, yes, um, they only pay twenty-three sixty-one, you pay seventy-nine seventy-five, they could have six people in their unit. I could have two people in my house. I think it's unfair, I think they should pay the same rates we do, that's it.
Okay. Thank you for sharing your opinion. So I know we are, and again, if we can adjust, we can go over on this, I know we are close to our twenty minutes on system development charges, um. I guess generally, as far as the structures is proposed, specific feedback on what that looks like, how you want to increase these over time? Does this look good to you? Does this look terrible to you? What's our bad here?
I mean, I would agree with Ann that there, we don't have projects, you know, coming down the pipe, do we look at spreading this out over more time?
And that really just becomes a risk of, I say these in quotes, because however you want to look at it, but of not bringing in that revenue if we have development, that's really the.
Right, right, yeah. We, there's seventy, there's seventy lots at McDevitt's Platte that have not yet been built.
I think I feel more strongly about that, about water rates rather than these system development charges at this point.
Okay, I agree with that.
Since we're behind on these connection fees.
Yeah, I agree.
And we're losing money until we bring it up to paying for itself.
Yeah, a mayor made a reference earlier to, we aren't able to make up for lost time, but we, there's, going up to a hundred percent is not ever going to make up for anything, it's only not getting farther further.
Right, losing more ground, right.
Not losing more ground with new connections and, and a more challenging system.
Yeah, and I, I struggled with this, how much it's going to cost, uh, for a while, I'm just mostly just sharing my thought process for anybody else who might be thinking about it, but and then I thought about, well, if I'm in the UGA or in the county and I don't have access to a water system, I've got to dig a well, you know, and what does a well cost? Well, it's way more than the system development charge, and then you've got to, you may, don't have your utility rate, you know, on a month-to-month basis, once you have your well, but you still have to pay for getting the water out of the well, and you also have to maintain it and test the water, and, you know, all the different stuff that goes into it, I thought, oh, maybe this is a pretty good deal. So. That, that system's thirty thousand dollars, and we're charging right now in twenty-six twenty. Yeah, if I go over thirteen, the full amount, you know, then it makes sense, I think.
Right, yeah.
I'd like, personally, I, I, the cost of materials is not going down, and I foresee the next two years, everything is going to be more expensive, so they're not batting an eye, it's just the way things work. We're going to be the good people and push it out for four years, I'd like to see this in three years, more condensed, because it's still going to be a fraction of the other actual costs that are going up so much. I think in the scheme of things, you look at these numbers in a vacuum, that's one thing, but we're in a deficit of being the good guys for so many years, and we've lost hundreds of thousands of dollars by not having this rate increase. I, I believe it should be more condensed in two or three years, to be honest with you, I think that's appropriate, the way things are going in the state of, of building, I believe. Four years, this two, this is too far out.
Okay, so you're saying you would rather see this in two to three years, bringing us up from fifty percent in water and sewer, seventy percent from water to a hundred percent.
There's so many plans, but infrastructure in this town, it's time to catch up, and we're the, we're the council, that's kind of like, it's in our lap, and I, I believe it should be two or three years. And again, in the scheme of things, it's, it's still a small cost to develop it. They're going to develop, if anybody's going to be developing in the next few years.
Uh, I would, to be clear, where my whole perspective is, I support, just as you proposed here, and I would entertain, uh, shortening it as well, but a hundred percent behind what you've recommended, including the, the, uh, cost of the wind increases.
Any other council thoughts? And again, I kind of put this down here, but my goal at the end of the day, if we can get there, is to be able to draft a resolution, ideally in October or November, for you to adopt, uh, that adopts these system development charges through twenty twenty-nine, and that way we can get notice out to the development community early that these are going to be increasing. I know that was feedback we got last year where people were frustrated. Um, so if possible, my goal for tonight would be to draft that resolution fundings. Does the count, other council members have feedback on what specifically you want me to prepare for you? As far as that timeline was set it out over?
My vote would be the four-year increase.
My vote is for a three-year increase.
Okay, those who haven't said anything?
Your logic is sound, I, I am fully on board with the four-year. If we would like to shorten this up to a two or a three-year, pardon me, and I guess it's just my nature, split the middle, go with three. I wouldn't bang the table if the majority felt like two years is preferable, I just think that we are going to, we are looking at a good amount of residential development within the next couple of years, and it would be nice if these changes reflected that.
I guess my feeling is it, this pays for it. That's where I'd leave it.
Yeah.
This pays for it, good, if it doesn't pay for it, then let's make a change.
Well.
Until we're at the max.
Then we go to a hundred percent.
Hundred percent now.
If you want to pay for it, Zeke, we go to a hundred percent now, we just make.
No, I didn't, I don't mean, I, I don't expect to go now, I mean, I like the way it's laid out. I, I guess what I'm, what I'm saying is that if we find that development is, is so far ahead of us, that we need to, you up it more, then that's still an option. Right.
Oh, until we're at the hundred percent of max, we're deficient, we're not getting enough money for connections.
Well, hearing Clint, uh, here at Travis, I'll go three years, well, that's three of us, is there already a fourth? They would say they, they'd support the three-year, and that would give Andy some clear direction, so.
I'd like to see the, the numbers, we, we went with three years.
We do a twenty twenty-ten option.
Twenty.
Twenty twenty-ten, no, twenty percent, twenty percent, ten percent.
Yeah. Yeah, we can absolutely do that, I don't know if you're in Salby, but a twenty percent increase, twenty percent increase, ten percent increase. And again, I'm not tied to any of these, you just tell me what you want.
That sounds great.
That would be three years.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-ten.
Twenty percent, twenty percent.
From four. Sounds like it.
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, you can, you can cross this one off the list of things to talk about, you've been a long time, thank you.
Oh, darn.
Well.
Rates might be a little more dynamic.
Yeah, right, yeah. The next is stretching the role.
We have to grab a pastry for this one. Thanks for all that, Andy, that's great, good stuff.
Yeah, thank you guys, I, I really appreciate talking through that together and having direction.
And thank you for the clarification about that maximum, maximum allowable means covering your costs.
Yeah, instead of, yeah, it does, because it's changing that whole dynamic, when you say maximum just means you're covering everything, right? Yeah. That was helpful.
Well, again, I'm sorry, I, I didn't realize the miscommunication that I was having in that process. Um, well, I won't pretend like this one will be as easy, um. So really, kind of the goals of the last fifty minutes that we have together, talking about what it looks like if we don't adopt the rates from the utility rate study. I know we brought projects before, we've talked about spreading it out, so I'm going to kind of walk through what the impacts are. The paper that's in front of you is just excerpts from the utility rate study that was brought to you, I think it was in January. Uh, so this is exactly what you tweeted for, but I just want to remind you of what the utility rate study showed that we're proposing. And ideally, I want to receive your feedback and then determine the next steps for implementation, if that's more talking about this, we can. Um, but really, at the end of the day, when we are looking at what happens if we don't move forward with the rates this proposed in the utility rate study, the biggest thing at the end of the day is that we do have projects, and that's what's been shared with you before, the projects and the timeline, and the risks associated with not completing those projects. But as I'm thinking about this in more detail, spreading that out over time isn't just about those projects, it's more about the money that we have in the utility funds to actually be able to move forward with projects. And I've been thinking about this a lot since the goal-setting session that we had, where one of the council's goals was to move forward with rebuilding residential streets, and that program we're calling ICIP, the Integrated Capital Development Program. In order to actually be able to be proactive with the replacement of utilities, we have this floor that we need to raise our utility rates high enough that we're at this minimum, where we actually have the funds on hand to be able to move forward with the ICIP projects. And right now, it looks like we have projects that are really heavily front-loaded. And the reason it looks that way is because those are things that we've identified as immediate needs. But those come up year over year, over year, I just don't know specifically what location it's going to happen year over year. But if we ever want to get out of the cycle of chasing water leaks and addressing things as emergency repair, and we want to be proactive, going, like sitting down and going through it, the only real way to do that is to aggressively. Going like sitting down and going through it, the only real way to do that is to aggressively increase rates. And part of that, too, as we're talking about inflation, these rates don't include inflation. So each year, even though we're talking about a fifteen percent increase, we're not functionally talking about a fifteen percent increase. In city expenditure or in, you know, twenty twenty six dollars. It's not actually a fifteen percent increase. It's. It's less than that because of inflation um. So. Truly, like sitting down and looking at what we have planned, where we're at in our. Water system plan, which again is still being updated, same with the sewer system plan. This is the, I I truly think this is the only path that gets us out of that. Otherwise, it's going to be past twenty twenty nine before we can actually start rebuilding infrastructure. And start bringing our our residential streets up. Um, looking at the budget, I I wasn't even realizing that we do in twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six. We are depending on real estate excise tax. To fund the water fund because we don't have the funds to move forward with the projects that are currently in our budget. So we already have. An interfund transfer happening from REIT. Um, because even what we currently have planned, we don't have, we don't have funds on hand to be able to afford with. Uh, and REIT isn't something that we can depend on and it doesn't generate the amount of income that we're actually needed to move forward with this project. Um.
So Andy, what are those problems? Specifically, can you list like three or four of those that need to be done now?
Yeah, um, we have Cedar Street was, which is an unlooped section of Main between. Uh, Burke and Burr. Section in there where we don't have looped main and we've had issues because of that. We have West Center Street, which has a deficient main. I think it has a three inch main or maybe a four inch main. There's a new uh a new home that's connected to that. And we said that they have sufficient water pressure years ago, which they don't, so. There is potential litigation there if we can provide that. Uh, we have Stafford Street, which has two. One and a half inch mains laid in parallel that feeds all the homes in that area and they have deficient water pressure. Which is also potential.
Legality.
Uh, litigation and then. Hoffler Street is the newest one that's come up this year that we added on. Um, Hoffler Street has. So many, it's like it's becoming what Pine Street was, where it had so many repair bands back to back on top of one another. That when we go to cut out a section, we don't have a good section to tie into, so that's the next one we're planning to replace. And then the fifth one is the section of Main at the end of Division Street that runs down to W R I. That is the same thing where we have so many bands back to back uh that if we have one more, we're gonna have to replace that whole section. And that one is really bizarre. It actually runs under the river. And has been abandoned on one side and not necessarily at the other. So, yeah, we do have, we do have a lot of projects that. That come up and because of that, we're using the funding that in my mind, I earmarked as great. We can actually like. Use this for ICIP and we can't because we have these immediate needs that have to get addressed with that. Um.
So you're saying the excise tax will be used for something else. You need you need the rates to provide that.
Yeah, this year the excise tax is paying for those projects.
Right.
We don't have the funds to be able to afford with those um. The other noteworthy thing too, that I've just been thinking a lot about, when we had that Pine Street Emergency Repair Project, I think it was two years ago now. Um, it was four hundred thousand dollars and. It was one of those, uh, as you're well aware. It was an emergency because as I was saying, we had so many repair bands and boiler plugs back to back that we. We actually had no good section when we cut out a portion that had failed to tie into. So we ended up having to replace back to Titus uh so from Titus to Fur. And in order to get funding for it, which we needed without doing an interfund loan from one of our other funds to cover the cost. We had to go to the Public Works Board and it was when Tom was here. So him and I were interviewed by the board to. Basically state why this happened and why we consider this an emergency. And it's really interesting. There was a board member uh who voted against our project and said. This is the city failing to plan ahead. This is not an emergency. They have known this issue has had a lot of leaks. They've done all these repairs on it. This is the city failing to plan. So he voted against it being funded by emergency funds. And I think if that happens year over year, that's a risk we run into.
Oh, yeah.
Is even being able to get these types of low interest loans um and without that, again. We don't have the cash on hand to be able to pay for those projects. We'd be looking at an interfund loan from one of the other funds. I've talked way too much. One question.
No, no, that's excellent explanation. Thank you.
What sort of community outreach do you have planned for all of us?
Well, with Kara.
Not my department.
Because this is gonna be really hard for people to absorb and. I mean. People's people's water bills as proposed right now, they're gonna nearly double in the next four years and. That's really expensive for water.
It absolutely is. And that's where I'm. I'm also a resident, so I I'm explaining to this, explained this all to you. And I'm also gonna be someone paying those bills as well. And I I do think it's. Really, we clearly explained, like you're saying, what is the outreach?
It also makes me pretty upset at past councils.
Right, yeah, yeah.
To be quite honest, like all of this deferred. All these deferred costs just to keep rates down and then we're in such a deep pit at this point financially. For, you know, basically triaging projects and not being able to get out ahead of anything. Uh, and be proactive is a pretty frustrating position to be in.
Absolutely. I think you guys are, you are, you're put in a really hard position because of the history that's happened here. And I don't wanna downplay that. This is not a light decision. This is a really, it's a big impact.
Yeah.
Big decision.
Have you um, and I I think that Anne may have some comment on this too with um. The P U D, uh have we seen electric rates? We've we've seen them go up a little bit and I. I I'm hearing word that they're gonna start jumping, even in Chelan County in the next, right, few years. I mean, I just. I mean, this is kind of in line, I mean, A, with some of the issues that we have to pay for this, the back. Issues that we should have been paying for all these years, maybe a rate increase along the way. But also. People are gonna see their other utilities, gonna get back to what we're about the connection fees, like we're being the good guys and it, that's a bad way of saying it, but.
Yeah.
We're gonna be the ones that are like, oh, let's do like a soft, let's do a ten percent, ten, they're gonna see electricity. Those are just like, you're gonna pay it. You can be mad at the P U D. And they're. That, I'm long winded.
I think I hear you.
There's a question in there. Are you keeping track? What is, I'd like to see, I'm curious, the difference between what you're. We've seen the past few years with rate increases with electricity and then where those are going anticipating the future. Any thoughts on that? Where we're gonna align? Does that make sense?
From my perspective, I have to look at this as a totally standalone utility because it is, like while I want to compare to the.
But those are necessary things. These are, these are necessary, water's necessary, electricity's pretty much necessary, right? Um, and people have to pay, you have to pay water. I mean, this is utility. I know it's standalone, but.
I'm not sure that water and power are easily comparable. They're more apples to oranges for me because. Uh, with power, the P U D has the ability, and this is what they currently do with with their rate structure, is they sell off more power than the rate users actually. Use and so they're selling off power that they're generating at the dams, particularly Shalane P U D that we're in. They're selling off more power than is needed.
Right.
So that they can keep our local rates down and we don't have the ability to do that with water.
So you think that the server farms and everything that's really kind of going on in Chelan County aren't gonna soak up some of those. Extra dollars and they're not gonna have a rate increase? I'm just saying, just running for the future, you don't think that.
That's how the commissioners are 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 working out the structure with the split Shalane P U D right now, is that they're they're selling. Most of the power to the open market at a higher cost than what rate pairs are paying so that they can. Cover costs for rate pairs.
Yeah. Okay, I know.
And and most of, and all those farms and stuff are bringing in electricity. They're mainly providing. The conduits for. So.
Yeah.
But anyway, but they are, that's apples and I mean, they're, they are, they're two very, very different and. Um, I mean, I I think one big. Change or big difference is, again, as Anne was saying, it makes us mad that we weren't more proactive. Year and year we go and quite frankly, the D V had been proactive for years and years. And that's why they haven't had to raise um dramatically still. And maybe, maybe the lesson we learned is years ago when I was sitting in one of your chairs as a council member, we had a. Uh, a water uh bottler that wanted to use our water and bottle it. And that's the way we should have uh made the money and sold our excess and.
Yeah.
Enchantment water.
I understand, I understand from a government standpoint, those are apples and oranges. I guess with Kara, we talked about kind of the communication was gonna be in this conversation. I don't think, I don't think that's apples and oranges. I mean, it's utility, electricity, water, they're both necessary in my house. I gotta charge my phone, use a computer, I drink water. I'm not sure, I need communication. I wouldn't say, oh, these are apples and oranges. I would say that they're similar. No? I'm gonna put on my pompadour here and I'm just gonna say that I think Andy, you did a great job. Outlining the story and and highlighting the context of why this is so important and. The risks to not taking this action. It is a drastic action. But the downstream effects of not taking this action will compound and they will be. Even worse, essentially. It's a yes and. I think that you did a great job articulating the need and the risk. To us as a council, I think from there, you know, I trust your conversations with Kara to try to shape. That. That story and the articulation to really highlight that need. I feel like bringing the P U D into it, again, I think it's. There's, it's working from a very different context um. And true, they're both utilities and they're both things you need, but. Where the Shalane County P U D is operating, it's. A vastly different context than than what we are having. Um, there's a reason why I think. I haven't checked the last couple of years, but they used to be the second large, second lowest cost. Power. Utility by county in the entire United States. Douglas County is number one. So. I I I feel like bringing in specifically Shalane County P U D as a comparison point would. Muddy the waters and bring up questions that are not germane to this particular discussion. Um, for me, it's a yes and. Uh, yes. The need is great and I understand it and I think we are also working into. A situation the next year or two where our constituents are going to deal with massively hyped rates. In a number of different areas. I was just reading up that. Most insurance plans that are on the uh insurance exchange will rise by an average of twenty two percent next year. And again, you need health insurance, you need water, you need electricity. So it's. It's a yes and. It stinks and yes, I'm mad and it has to be done and. People are gonna take it in the shorts next year and there's not much we can do about it. Because if we don't do this, it feels short sighted and irresponsible.
Yeah. On that, I'm interested in the point about the increase in health insurance. These rates help pay for employees' health insurance. So our costs increase too, right? And these rates help us keep up with those causes. On on the note of the short sighted, not wanting to be short sighted and not do something, um. Andy talked about this doesn't cover cost of living. And I feel like the twenty twenty nine where it's a three percent. Increase, I think right there, we should account for cost of living and going forward. So instead of three percent, we should look at what is. What would this all be if you accounted for cost of living? Try and make up for there at the in twenty twenty nine and and then have something in place going forward. We. Account for that on a basis. Otherwise, some other council is gonna have the opportunity to not do anything about this for. Years and then it'll end up being the same problem. Do we, we could fix it right now in perpetuity.
Well, and starting in twenty thirty, we could have it where the rates go up with inflation every year.
Yeah.
That's just, that becomes the norm.
Right, yeah.
Absolutely.
Just a quick point of clarification. I wasn't saying push out communication compares to P U D, just for my own justification. I felt like I was way off on that. I was, I was not recommending that. Thank you.
No, I I think my my question about communication in general was, I think that. We're gonna have to hit it strong and often in order for this to be remotely palatable to the community because it's gonna be. A shock.
Yeah.
To see these rates going up.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be, you know, to Clint's point, life's gonna start getting really expensive to live here. So. It, I mean, it already is.
Yeah.
And. This could be a challenge for some people in order to stay here as residents.
I think one thing they should know, they should know about those projects. They don't have a clue of what projects. This is paying for and I think they, as much as you can, as much as we can. Here's, here's what's being done this year because of these rates, it's funding these things, it's changing our water system, but. They don't have any, they just know, you know, the city's raising our rates again. They've done it for the last three years. But if they knew there were projects out there, not that that would. Change everything, but it might help.
Yeah.
So.
Photos are right, pictures are worth a thousand words. I mean, I. It's the with the stormwater with the wood troughs. I was shocked last year learning about the open troughs that we have, which is. Fine, right? In certain areas, like pictures of that, like we have wooden heights, like I wanna scare people, but. You guys have some cool photos of like all these connections and all these like patch, 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 and we just couldn't. Tap into a section. There wasn't enough bite to, I mean.
Right.
Yeah.
Those photos. I know you guys take photos on every, when they're opened up and that's important. Yeah.
Well, I think, um, I think Salby and I can start meeting with Kara early to come up with what the plan is going to be for this year. Communication, how we're going to implement. Luckily, what is it, September? We have, we have a tiny bit of time that we can start.
We have an opportunity to bring people along.
Yeah.
Sorry, say that again.
We have an opportunity to bring people along.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Give them a heads up, it's coming.
Yeah, I know, Andy, like you said, I mean, you're resident, we're all residents of this this town and. If I wasn't on council, you know, and and if I didn't have all this information as a resident, yeah, I would be really upset, but.
Yeah.
For me, knowing that. It's a means to an end. It's like if we, we have to do this if we want better roads. If we want, you know, our infrastructure to last, you know, and not have to be reactive, if we wanna be proactive. You know, to take care of the city, then if if that's what this takes, you know, if that's what it takes, then.
Well, and I think, I think teaching the community about the costs associated with all of these emergency fixes as well.
Right.
How much more expensive they are if they're not incorporated into a planned project. I think that could be beneficial.
Mm hmm.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I think making sure that there's communication too with resources for subsidized if you're, uh, you know. A certain income, there's opportunities with the city. We do work with, so I do make make that also part of this.
Yeah.
I think that communication that there are programs available if you if you qualify, right?
About hardships, our percentage for hardships is very low. Rates aren't going up too much.
Um, hey, with all that in mind. What do you need before you would be ready to vote on this? What would you say?
No.
This, this is very much related, but another quick.
Yes.
Down at the frequently asked questions page, AKA revamping the website.
Yeah.
I I think that it is really tough when nobody can get the answers they're seeking and they they go to the internet, they go to Facebook. And we're told not to engage on Facebook and all they're getting is false information or just belly aching. I would really love it if there was a place they could go and and they can do a deep dive, say, why are my utility rates going up?
Absolutely.
I think it solves so many problems upfront. It really, it really helps. Stop the fire before it gets started, right?
Yeah.
We do that with our brand. I mean, all the time. I just changed our warranty section cuz people were buying the wrong size bladder. For their pillow. We have a lifetime warranty, but now. Because of some of these issues that have happened, they've ordered the wrong one, they would have sent another one, they throw that one away. You have to send it into the company. I mean, these adjustments, I mean, I changed the language and it's like, you're listening and listening and I'm shifting and I mean, that'd be the same thing with the city. I think that's. Starting now and then we're still tweaking, tweaking, tweaking it. I mean, it's, it's important. Listening is, social listening is important.
Because you can put those pictures of the infrastructure, you can, we can put in all that kind of stuff and do quick, concise because of this. And here's more information. If you wanna do a deep dive, get that rabbit hole started and people can go down it as deep as they want. And here's more information. If you wanna do a deep dive, get that rabbit hole started and people can go down it as deep as they want. That's what I would like to see to vote on this is we have that plan in place to answer the questions.
Okay.
Yeah, like that. When people ask me why this is happening, I can give them six projects. This is gonna fund. That's really important. That's why I, I, that's what I do.
I think the projects is one thing, so I, that resonates with a lot of people, but I think what really people need to know, what really need people to sink in is that we've been underpaying for so long. It was artificial, the rates were artificially deeply. So we weren't paying enough and that's why we're, that's why our roads.
They haven't kept up with costs or inflation.
Yeah, and so we can't, we, we haven't been able to fix the roads because we can't afford it because we don't have the right rates being paid by the users. And so just saying, well, we need to, we need to fund these, you know, projects. I can see a lot of people reacting and saying, well, we should have budgeted for it. You know, there's gonna be a lot of things, but why, why, why don't we have, you know, these projects, we've known, we've known about this for years. Yes, we didn't up the rates before.
I think part of the educational communication component is also explaining what these enterprise funds are for and other funds that cannot be used to pay for these projects. Because I, I think there's a, a fair amount of misunderstanding amongst the community that we make a ton of tax dollar money and so we should just be able to fund projects with it and that's not how it works.
Right.
And so I think there's a, there's an educational component that needs to be incorporated.
Absolutely. This is such good feedback. Thank you. What else? What else? We got lots of time.
I didn't expect to get it. Short and great.
Another anecdote to that is I worked for, excuse me, a picture frame shop. Right? Picture frame, disgusting picture framing and uh, ultimately they closed that, my my good friend I was working with, uh, closed that store, that location in the suburbs of Arizona and in our going out of business, people came out of the woodwork. And it's like, dude, where were you guys the past two years? You know, now we're going to business, everybody shows up. I mean.
Everybody likes a deal.
Yep, everybody likes a deal, but it's like, if you would have supported us along the way, if these rates would have supported the city along the way, we wouldn't be here. And it's like, we just, we just can't. Stay up.
Well, as a relative newcomer who hasn't had the advantage of having low rates all these years, I, I take this, I'm, I take offense to these rates.
I'm a water gluttonous household.
Whatever leaky sprinkler system.
Yeah, I had a leak fixed it.
Again, you looked at your face, right? So, yeah.
I feel like everybody I know who was like relatives that you talk about utility rates with, you know, they all have much higher bills than I do.
Yeah.
And I live in a reasonable sized home and we water our lawn and gosh, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I don't want it to be more than it has to be. Of course, I, I like it, but it's not that much, but people around the US West Coast pay a lot more for their electricity, their, their water.
Oh.
Everything it seems like, seems like we have a pretty good deal. Gas and electricity on, uh, in New England through the roof and when you did mention Travis about the increases, there, it's really, really hurting. Like people are having five hundred dollar bills in the winter.
Whoa. It's necessary. They need to heat their, I mean, it's like the harsh winters back east, yeah.
My mom lives in Las Vegas, that, the five, five hundred dollar bill is not shocking. That's just, like, just electric bills sometimes.
Gee.
And then you throw in gas, throw in water.
Yeah, same words.
You're like, yeah, eight hundred dollars.
Are there any other questions about this for tonight?
It stinks, but it's necessary. End of story.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I want the names of the past council members.
Yeah.
That was pretty brave for the mayor to throw out. Back when I was sitting in your seat, wait, we were just talking about you.
Well, yeah, I was at authority voting a lot of things, I'm gonna be telling you.
No.
The past count, yeah, the past, I feel like we're nearly unanimous on a lot of our decisions with this council. There've been councils in the past over the years that are divided and Oh, yeah. Working against each other. Has it been contentious years at some point, I suppose?
Yeah, we've had a, we've had a very diverse makeup of city councils in the last fifteen years.
The, the issues that we've been talking about though are, it's not like it's cut dry, but it's pretty clear. Like it's kind of
breaking to do.
The, the evidence is overwhelming, I'd say, on what he said.
Yeah, you're not gonna pretend, right? It's pretty overwhelming.
Well, there was a, there was a, a whole long, fairly long period of time where Arizona's whole focus was the rate payers and keeping it low for them. I mean, so they just did not want to raise them. I mean, it just, it's all in what you're gonna value, right? So that's your value, then this is the result. You just push things off, but, but you did keep them low.
Seems unfortunately short sighted.
Boy.
Yeah.
Like, yeah, this city's here in perpetuity, this is.
And if you wanna be really honest, that those of us who see that and are sticking our necks out. It's often what gets councils voted out. So you gotta be willing to not be political in this and be what's in the interest of the community and let the chips fall where they may, but.
I don't think this stuff needs to be political. I think if you have a really good educational communication plan associated with the explanation of need, it shouldn't be a political conversation.
Right, yeah.
By the numbers.
I think some folks are making it political, but I think you have a critical mass that might get it. I'm just saying in other communities that I've seen it happen, right?
Right, yeah.
They take that kind of dramatic stuff.
Well, staff, if you like your city council currently, let's figure out a good communication.
Yeah, let's make sure we're.
Thank you all so much for being back tonight. Um, system building, harsh rates. I really appreciate it.
Well, you did a great job, man.
Yeah, thanks, everybody.
You made it out for us.
Yeah, thank you, Andy.
And as a re- reward, you get a bigger break before the election.
Guys, you guys wanna watch Bree Campwell's video?
Pause it. Okay, there you go.
I've been approached by a few people, maybe more than a few, uh, and recently by, uh, a member of the community about the Osborne School. And that's a bigger issue, but, but more specifically, as we approach winter, the covered area. I know it's utilized a little bit for storing some things, but it also, um, was closed off because of vandalism. We have massive shortage of space for people to recreate in the winter, especially sports like that our, our teams typically have a lot shorter time period to prepare for spring because we don't have covered space in the snow. Anyways, uh, the question was asked, what, what can we do to get that covered space in Osborne and utilize it? People in, uh, soccer's specific thing that, uh, I was asked if the soccer community can adopt that space, take on the responsibility, what would that look like? And, um, I directed, uh, Ben to, to the city and Andrea said that get it on the discussion, that he could bring it up here. So I'm wondering if their council has any interest in having that on a future study session. Um, and I can invite or we can invite, um, the soccer club to come in and maybe make a proposal or talk to us about their ideas. Um, I'd like to talk about it. Anybody else?
I would like to see what we can do to open that space back up. I mean, it seems it seems harsh to, you know, to close that down because of vandalism, but there's gotta be something we can do to I mean, I've lived here for forty-two years and I've never, I've never seen that, that space closed.
No, I think it's a great, I think it's, we're definitely a discussion item for sure. Like, it's working real well for the autumn leave to park your stuff there, but I think you know, that's not why we bought the building. It wasn't for storage, it was for community use. So, yeah, let's, let's get to it.
I've heard several families ask me why the kids can't go play basketball under there.
Yeah, I'd like to go play basketball.
Yeah, yeah.
That's pretty good, but throw it indoor soccer, if there was a couple of nets that were, I mean, standard soccer size. Big enough for indoor soccer.
So you guys, you guys wanna put it on a future agenda?
Yeah.
Better hustle, winter's coming.
Yes.
That was an easy ask.
Yeah.
Drake is all. Call the meeting of the Leavenworth City Council for September twenty-third to order. Stand or the pledge of allegiance. Travis, honor leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, roll call.
Sharon Waters.
Clint Strand.
And Hesper.
Deke Reister.
Shane Thayer.
Travis McMaster.
Mike Bedard.
And all present and accounted for. Now, before we go to the consent agenda, I'm gonna ask for a motion to excuse certain members. We are calling the parade a meeting of the council, so we could indeed all be present without running, um, amiss. So, um, we've got a request for excused absences from Mr. Reister, Ms. Hesper, and Mr. Bedard and Ms. Waters. So I would entertain a motion to excuse those from the Autumn Lee Festival Parade. Second. Okay.
Technically Sharon will be there. She just won't be with the council.
Unless I could get this down somewhere. I don't wanna go in the crowd and all that.
So she's opting at this point.
I have a psychological therapy excuse.
And you are counted as being there.
I am counted.
You are counted as being.
I'm the emcee for the.
You're the emcee.
All right, uh, we've got a motion. All those again, all those in favor, let me see your hands. And it passes unanimously. Now I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
That's one. Agenda be approved.
Again.
O by Z, seconded by Shoney. All those in favor, let me see your hands. And that food passes unanimously. Again, as we move into our meeting, I just remind everyone that we're respectful of each other. We acknowledge it's okay to disagree. Prior to our comments, you must be recognized by the chair and address any comments to the council as a whole, not to individuals. Keep your comments focused on the topic that's being discussed unless you are commenting on items not on the agenda. And with that, we will go to any public that wants to speak, items not on the agenda. Mr. Ron. Board name and address and let's hear from you.
Ron Duncan, uh, G twenty-four Cast State Street. I just wanted to go on record, uh, that it was disappointing during the working session to hear the council strain at charging the actual system utility charge, uh, the full charge uh, while not batting an eye at doubling the, uh, the upcoming rates. Uh, it was, it, it's, it's interesting. There is a, there is a correlation that we heard from our public works director before, we can't count on the, uh, system development charges coming in for our budget, but we do know when they don't come in or when we charge a fifty percent discount, which is what we've been doing. That the ultimate result is the rate payers have to make up that difference. And, uh, so on the one hand, you're communicating that the rate payers are just gonna have to suck it up and take a double, a double utility rate. But we're really concerned about charging the actual system development charge right now for new connections. So I think those work against each other and, and you can't really, uh, be concerned about previous councils making poor decisions when you're unwilling to charge the actual system development charge January one of twenty twenty-six. So it, it was disappointing to hear that discussion. I would hope that you would prioritize the rate payers and, and charge the, uh, system development charges as they are meant to be at a front, hundred percent.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, now we've got a special guest and I've got a special proclamation to read. And you're gonna have to sit through it all while I read it and then I will gladly pass it on to you. Uh, this is proclamation oh six of twenty twenty-five, a proclamation designating September twenty-third twenty twenty-five as Digital Access Day. Whereas access to digital resources and technology is essential for education, employment and healthcare in our modern society. And whereas promoting digital equity ensures that all individuals, regardless of background or socioeconomic status, have access to the tools and the skills necessary to thrive in this digital age. And whereas the North Central Washington Digital Access Coalition in collaboration with North Central Washington Tech Alliance is dedicated to bridging the digital divide in North Central Washington through advocacy, education and community engagement. And whereas the City of Leavenworth recognizes the importance of fostering an inclusive and accessible digital environment for all of its residents. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the City of Leavenworth, Washington, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-five as Digital Access Day. The City of Leavenworth calls upon its residences, business, educational institutions and community organizations to join in efforts to promote digital equity and ensure that everyone in our community can fully participate in and benefit from the digital world. Signed this twenty-third day of September, twenty twenty-five. Carl Florrie Mayor, and I will hand this over. I'm coming out to give it to you. Put it on camera.
I do.
Get a pitch.
I have a meeting tomorrow, so I would like to give, to share. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. There you go. Yes. All right, now we've got a couple of reports. We'll start with Corporal Randy Lake.
I think at the July meeting, I didn't have June hours, so I'll give them all. June was seven hundred and sixty-nine with twenty-fourth foot. Well, I dropped a little bit by ninety-five with nineteenth foot. And August, seven twenty-eight with seventeen. We are all filled up and ready for Oktoberfest. Fill all the overtime slots, so please nice and quiet, thank you. Before this, sometimes I there. Not something. Somebody has some question.
Do you man, do you manage this book can and some of these other agencies that come in? Is that you that are managing the team for Oktoberfest those weekends?
Um, I set up the overtime shifts. They actually filled up without me having to take any on the weekend. I'm off.
Yeah.
Usually there's a supervisor, a deputy.
But it's the Shalane sheriffs that, that is in control of that, right? Or is there, who's in charge of the?
The Phoenix that shows up?
Yeah, the, yeah.
The Phoenix has their own supervisors. I don't do it, I don't.
You're on it, you do your own thing and they.
Yeah.
Okay.
We just, it shares us. The festival lights, um, with, with the state patrol. They, uh, last year built some of the spots. That we didn't build. It's difficult to build five weekends.
Right.
With some long days and, and maybe that is there needed.
Yeah.
Which, uh, and but I, I think we have a meeting coming, uh.
We have a meeting about traffic, not till the temp, but I'd like to chat with you about OT needs before that, possible. Which next meeting with the mayor on Monday? It's coming Monday?
Correct, yeah, I do get this.
Can I, can I interject myself into your meeting?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Are you back at the full force too? I know this summer you had some, you had time off, some, yeah.
There's two laterals on F D O. And. Three, I think, in the academy. We just started the academy, so there'll be six months. So they're in the middle of FDO. The academy is about four and a half months now. Almost five, I think, all these, if I could stretch that, almost five.
Right.
Okay, cool.
I'll be, they'll be out, start the twelve week FDO program. And I think there's one or two spots. Starting July of twenty sixth. There'll be some openings.
From some retirees or just expanding?
I'm going somewhere between July and January.
Yeah.
Of next year.
Okay.
Probably get this closer to July all the time.
Okay.
Five. I look at the little bit of difference of dates.
Yeah.
For me staying until the end of the year is just because it was my anniversary day on January one.
Oh, is that right?
So they can be pulled. Twenty six years, twenty five and a half, might be enough.
Yes.
Right, or with the gown. With the jailer for that was, and for certain. Thirty years, just a lot.
Yeah, that's great, man. That's good.
But then there'll be. Still. At least two more in January. There's another one that's going somewhere between July and January, it's probably closer to July with me. So these four spots by the end of next year, probably a couple of.
Yeah.
And then that'll be kind of a. Circle of people leaving quite a bit. Yes, ma'am.
Um, sorry for this, but I watch FBI, FBI and Law and Order, not those kind of shows.
But I need to tell my wife to answer.
Where it says two dead bodies. Pardon me? It says two dead bodies. Uh, unattended death to.
Oh, unattended deaths. That's just usually natural causes.
Okay, I don't think I've noticed that before.
Oh, yeah, unfortunately. All the time.
Okay.
Every month there should be at least a couple.
Okay. I'll have to read this more carefully. Thank you.
Just a question, the difference in your two lists, uh, got offenses by location and then citations issued by location. What's the difference between an offense and a citation?
The citation they actually get the ticket.
Fence is just.
Offense is the call, all terms.
Okay.
Yeah, they either didn't get caught or. Went a different route than just doing the citation.
So they couldn't end up on both lists because you have a DUI alcohol or drugs, and you also have one over on the right side. Is that the same call or is that just? One was called in suspicion of and you didn't find somebody or?
Yeah, that happens quite a bit. You know, we're not always. It's three thousand square miles. And there's. Generally, six to eight of us working. That's a lot. Two apart, two in the valley. Two out here. Can't always be in the right spot. Where they just make it home on that home before they can get home.
Three thousand square miles in the county, but this monthly report is specific to city limits, correct?
Uh. Yeah, I, I did print out this one.
It's just Leavenworth monthly report. These are the same report you give us every city.
The, uh, Randy on domestic violence, there was four of those. Is that? Average, is that high, low? For not a month, is that common for August?
It's, um, it can be a little bit misleading. People call it in and it'll get titled domestic violence if it's in the household. Whether it's a verbal argument or actual crimes committed. Uh, it can also be if the kids are acting up. If they're sixteen age.
Hmm.
Where it's not necessarily a. Going to be under the mandatory arrest for physical assault. In the DVD, but they'll river come up high with DVD assault.
Okay. That's where it started.
That's where it started.
Okay.
But it's a very common call.
Hmm.
Other questions? Alright. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you. Thank you, Randy.
Alright, Mike.
So, uh, not much of a surprise, uh, fire season is continuing on. Uh, going to continue on until we get basically a season ending, uh, rain or, you know, snow event. Uh, the fuel moistures are still kind of hovering right around record low levels. Uh, so we're kind of seeing, uh, and I, I talked about it a little bit here, uh, that what we've seen, uh, that what we saw with the Sugarlo Fire, right? The, uh, I haven't been in here to talk to you guys since, you know, we did have a hot road community of limitous foul. Uh, which is a foul as bad, uh, extreme fire behavior if you can get, uh, they actually had two the same day. Uh, there was one on the Wildcat Fire, uh, and then we had one, uh, here on the Indiak side. Uh, and what that was is, uh, it got into a fuels project that had been completed on the Indiak Valley side. And, uh, there were a bunch of piles that had been. Cut, unfortunately cleaned up, and they piled it, they come back and burned it at some point, they had not yet gotten to that, uh, you know, a wind event. Got into that fuel and we saw, that's when you saw the hot road can you hold in this file, which again is very rare. That's the first one I've ever seen. In person, uh, the only other ones I've seen were in California. Uh, so we've been pretty lucky with that. Uh, I'm sure you guys are following it. Our side of the fire is looking extremely good. That's when you see fifty two percent containment. Uh, that's basically your, uh, Little Chumstick Creek, Mary Canyon area up there. That's the only area of the fire that they're really following contained. Uh, and we're also not seeing a lot of heat or anything, so it's kind of calmed down a little bit for us. Uh, it's still kind of burning up on the north end. There's potential, uh. Of an extreme event that, uh, you know, the Chihuahua lines, this online still be threatened and potentially Little Chumstick, but. Uh, it's fairly low and, and, you know, as the day go on, we can feel it getting cooler, more humidity. Uh, that's only going to help. Uh, they're doing a lot of burnout operations to tie this in because we. Have a wind event coming up on Thursday. And they want to try to get some stuff secured before that goes in, but, uh, again, our side of the fires looking great. So I think our biggest, uh, issue. Assuming we don't get another start is going to be smoke. It's not going anywhere again until we get that seated ending event. Uh, our brush truck just got back last week. They were assigned to the incident management team on Lower Sugarlo. Uh, we actually put that together. That was China County Fire Districts. Uh, the Mo Coordinator for the region, Brandon Asher out of Shalan. Uh, we had to put together a strike team overnight. Uh, there was, in the beginning of Lower Sugarlo, there was extreme issues with getting resources. And, uh, the first couple of nights where it was growing, you know, a thousand acres overnight. Uh, they had one forest service engine stationed on it.
Hmm.
And, uh, that's all that they could get. So the, uh, the fire service had to come together and we put together a strike team. Uh, that stayed out on Mary Canyon, basically to do structural protection on night shift, and they ended up even over the full fourteen days because they weren't able to get. Uh, enough people to replace them until fourteen days or something, so. Uh, our fuels grew back working, uh, they were kind of positive helping out, uh, with Sugarlo Fire as well. So again, uh, it just states again right here that the fuels were still receptive, right? And the term that the incident management team use that I think describes the best is that the fuels outperformed the weather. Uh, there were models in the beginning of Lower Sugarlo that said it wasn't going to make any big moves. It wasn't supposed to make any big runs. The models were all wrong, computers were wrong. Uh, and it was kind of unprecedented, uh, that the modeling would be that off. Uh, and again, that comes back to the fuels being dry and having an unprecedented level and threw all that off. Uh, and so they, they use that term that the fuels outperform the weather and we keep seeing extreme fire behavior when the weather. Would it normally, uh, you know, we wouldn't be predicting that. But again, things are getting better. We're getting humidity recoveries tonight. You can, you're getting cooler, it really helps. Uh, and actually the, uh, you know, the low ceiling, I know it's back to the smoke, but that really helps on, uh, on the fire if you have that, uh, low ceiling and pulls the smoke down. So. You can, I can also answer any questions about the. Rush fires, what's going on, yeah? Our training is mostly continuing on with pumping and hydraulics. I believe we're working on that over the past, uh, two months. Uh, we do have one of our members attending, uh, intermediate ICS class. Uh, this training helps take a firefighter from operating basically at the, uh, at the firefighter level company officer and start kind of thinking up at the, uh. Next level of, uh, incident command. Uh, and that's usually, uh, intermediate ICS, it's for expanding incidents, kind of a little bit more than your standard, your car accident, uh. Things like that. Uh, as far as response, we responded to five hundred and forty nine calls so far in twenty twenty five. That's down from five seventy eight the same day last year. Uh, on the nineteenth, I forget if it's last Thursday or Friday, uh, we responded to a structured fire that had extended to wildland fuels on Chumstate Highway. Uh, the fire ended up destroying a couple of outbuildings, RV, but it was able to be pretty quickly contained. Uh, with help from Second Alarm Resources from District Six, Lake Wenatchee Fire and Rescue Casimir. Uh, and Wenatchee Valley Fire Department, who all sent up, uh, additional manpower to help with that effort. Uh, last night, we responded to a rush fire at the five mile post ninety eight on Tumwater Canyon. Uh, it was like days that blew all over again, right? Uh, June tenth, I believe it was. We responded to a fire in that, uh, same location. Again, it was a good save on that day. Uh, we didn't quite get the movement. Uh, it wasn't running quite as hard yesterday, but it still did, uh. It was burning in the same footprint, the original footprint, uh. But, I mean, that's been four months, there's been time for high needles and fuels to fall. So it started within that original footprint, ended up, uh, jumping the line at the top of the fire. Uh, but they were able to get up there, uh, get that hooked. And, uh, and contain before they, before they came down last night. It's, uh, it's not in a great place. We don't really like having people up there at night. But, uh, we kind of needed to get a knock on the fire. We can't just leave it up there burning. Uh, and again, uh, that ended up, that was, that is forest service land. Uh, we were able to turn it over to them in the morning, but again, due to staffing shortages and resource shortages, they were not able to send anybody. Uh, so they would not have been able to respond to that fire for about twelve hours.
Wow.
Uh, but again, luckily we have a forest firefighting agreement. Uh, you know, it's, it's, it's not that they don't want to, they're just stretched out pretty thin. Uh, so again, it was District Three, District Six, and Lake Wenatchee Fire and Rescue. Uh, that all came together and, uh, we were able to get that. Get that, uh, contained and mopped up. So that's kind of. Where we're at, we're looking better now. I'm hopeful that we're kind of rounding a corner towards the end of the weather change and with the containment on Lower Sugarlo. Uh, obviously Blue Pass is still closed for Labor Mountain. Uh. That seems to be sort of a, uh, hour by hour thing that they're watching. They're expecting a wind event up there on Thursday that I know. Uh, they are concerned about. Uh, I don't know that it's, they're predicting it to go towards houses, but they want to get the highway reopened if it chunks the highway. Uh, that'll be a whole nother set of problems. So they're working on it. They're trying to get ahead of it. Uh, that's what they managed to do on Lower Sugarlo. They were. Kind of reeling for the first probably, almost the first week and a half to two weeks, uh, they finally got out in front of the fire. And, uh, except on the Indiak side, they haven't had great success over there, but. Uh, everything they did on the other flanks is, uh, at this point, they've got out in front of it. Uh, it's been successful. Most of it's been burned out. It's considered, uh, fully contained. Uh, but Labor is a totally different story and they're still on that eastern flank. They're still trying to catch up, so. Uh, it's been an interesting, uh, few weeks.
Hmm.
They were, you had Wildcat, Labor Mountain, and Lower Sugarlo that all started at the same time and. Uh, all of them are fighting each other for resources. Our local range of district is screaming that, no, we have Leavenworth right here. We have houses, you know, two miles away. We need the resources. And Wildcat and Labor there all doing the same thing, so. Uh, nobody got all the resources that they, that they ordered to control their fires, so. We kind of saw that, uh, unchecked growth for, for those time period. But luckily at this point, they've kind of caught up and, uh, everything's moving forward, looking good.
Mike, is the lack of resource and manpower due to those cuts, federal cuts?
Not that I'm aware of. Uh, we're only at a, uh, national preparedness level. I think we're, we're low. It's at a two. Uh, it was just a, there was that lightning bust that happened all at the same time, and there was just a ton of IAs that popped. And, uh, they couldn't get them in there. The forest service guys I've talked to said it. It af, it affects their support and logistics. I mean, you kind of understand the system, right? So all of those, uh, wilderness rangers and people that had fire qualls and stuff, now they're not necessarily available for that backfill. Uh, or to be drawn in.
More than usual.
I would assume it has some effect, but I think this was more, uh. Due to all of the fires starting at the same time. And again, they have their computer modeling and their fire behavior analysts. That predict, okay, this fire should get the priority for their scientific reasons, but again. Uh, they kind of saw a bunch of fire behavior that nobody predicted, right? Uh, and so they thought basically like, okay, we're going to try to maneuver these resources and try to get everybody. To do the best we can and they kind of lost three fires. Again, just trying to, they're doing the best they can with pretty, pretty limited resources.
Yeah. Yeah, well, that fire ninety eight mile post, that started within the old, old burn?
Yes, yeah, it looks like they just. Uh, there was another campfire.
Man caused, was that your, yeah.
Is there a suspect? Was, was there a vehicle parked on the side of the road or?
No one to be, no one, no one around. I mean, it, it's an encampment of some kind, but, uh, there was no one, a lot of time there was someone there.
Uh, was it the person that started the campfire?
No, they said that it was teenagers from Cal, so. Uh, it's extremely difficult to, the, I believe, uh. Forest Service, I don't know if the Forest Service law enforcement, but they had a wildfire investigator come out. It's, you know, it was escaped campfire. Uh, human caused, but. It's extremely difficult in a situation like that to nail down who. Yeah. And I mean, it, it, there could have been multiple people camping, you know, it might not, and there could have been, the person could have started it bolted in this poor guy's, same.
Yeah.
It's tough. So there is, uh, we have written a letter and started the conversation. Uh, I might reach out to you to see about presenting to the council. We did send a letter to the forest supervisor, uh, and the forest ranger. And, uh, we're going to probably pick it up to the regional, uh, forest service director about, uh, closing Tumwater. Seasonally closing Tumwater to camping the campfires.
Hmm.
Uh, basically from Mal, from the Mount Tumwater Canyon to the end of it, Tumwater Campground. Uh, so we're potentially going to reach out to look for letters of support, uh. Again, this is the second fire up there this year that's drained, uh, drained all three local fire districts to try to get it contained. We're just trying to, uh, we don't want to restrict user groups. We talked to the Leavenworth Mountain Alliance. Uh, talked a little bit with the kayak community. It really isn't going to affect, uh, it doesn't sound like, from what we've heard from them, it's really going to affect those other user groups.
No.
Uh, and our biggest thing is just safety and not just. We don't want a fire right there for the economic reasons and all of the reasons, but also it's dangerous for the people camp there, you know, roll out on. Hillside that speed. If they, if they start a fire, they're not aware, but it rolls out and runs up to them. You could get somebody seriously hurt and killed pretty quick on some of that speed, so. Uh, it's their safety as well that we're concerned with. That was a lot, that's probably the most, yeah.
And can you, and can you reach out to me with some dates to, uh, start talking about our fuel reduction.
Yes, I saw your email today, so we beat that ball a little.
Yeah, I haven't been pressing you for me.
Any other questions?
What was threatening Valley High, was it yesterday or the day before, when they were on a level two?
Oh, I, uh, I think they moved up some and there's some level threes up there that are, uh. It's really cabins, kind of like remote cabins up on forest service roads. Uh, I'd have to double check. I don't want to speak out of turn on where they moved it, but I would not be surprised if Valley High was level one, level two. Uh, it's. Their area, just because it's the closest populated area, that's kind of their area of biggest concern. I don't, it doesn't, it's not really aligned to make a run at Valley High. Uh, but again, they're going to concentrate on that closest population center.
Great, you got. Right. We will move into resolutions, ordinances, orders, and other business. And the first action item is Resolution twenty four, twenty twenty five. This is the one I presented to you, um, at your last meeting. On not selling off public lands by the federal government. Um, this is one that has been circulated, um, modeled by the Mountain Pat Group. Um, all the mountain communities and. And are, uh. Trying to, they will be issuing, uh. A, uh, press release, um, and sending these to all, um. Public officials, um, actually just tomorrow, um, in anticipation. September twenty seventh is actually. Noted as Public Lands Day, and so they want to get this going before then. So that is, um, the resolution that's before you. I got the feeling, the sense that there was a willingness to pass this. I hope that still holds and I would entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moved to approve Resolution twenty four. Twenty twenty five, no selling of public lands by the federal government.
Second.
You by Z, seconded by Shane. Any other questions? You by Z, seconded by Shane. Any other questions, comments? In the audience, oh. All right, I will take the vote. All those in favor, let me see your hands. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Um. Action item number nine is ordinance seventeen fifteen. Uh, business license code updates and reviews. I'll be sticking addresses.
Yeah, uh, this is what Chantel presented to you last time. There's a change of state law that we have to adopt by the end of October. Um, to basically double um, the amount of un- uh. Of revenue that a, or a business makes before they have to get a business license endorsed within city limits. So that is uh. As before you, as an ordinance seventeen fifteen, you'll see breadline changes um, on the actual code. That brings in compliance with the new state law.
Uh, we'd entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to adopt ordinance seventeen fifteen. Amending Leavenworth Municipal Code, Chapter Five, Business Licenses.
Second.
Moved by Ann, seconded by Mike. Any questions? Seeing none, I will ask for a vote. All those in favor, let me see your hands. Again, passes unanimously. And action item ten is interlocal agreement.
I'm sorry. Yes, uh, the council, at the same time, uh, Chantel, two weeks ago, discussed our uh, license fees. Uh, we've done a comparison, a loose comparison every couple, uh, most, a couple of times since I've been here. And haven't made any recommendations to increase these. The council did ask to see the breakout of a number of communities. Um, that research was done by Chantel staffers included in your packet. Reviewing it um. Briefly, we are lower, but um. If that's problematic, then we would take a recommendation. We would embed whatever your recommendation is. Into our uh, update, our next update for our rate fee schedule.
Do you know the history on why it was simplified? I noticed that most of the examples that Chantel. Provided us after we had requested them that were in our packet. Most of those municipalities do break it out. Into these five different categories associated with employee numbers. And do we know the history of why it was overly simplified?
I did not do that research. We could go back through the two thousand nine minutes and try to find out.
I know we don't have to take this action today because it will be specifically associated with our fee schedule at the end of the year, but. Um.
We were just looking for some direction if you want me to get any, any changes. And if you want us to bring back a recommended. Recommended fee schedule that more closely mirrors what the other communities that you accessed to research do have to do though.
Um. I'd like to know why it was oversimplified if that's not too hard to dig for.
We'll look for it.
And did Chantel's ride up cover it in a note for you? I know she did talk about. Um. I remember being there for ease of processing and sharing accuracy of annual billing.
It was just reduced for ease of processing, it seems like. Um. Uh. I wouldn't mind. I wouldn't mind knowing a little bit more history um, for the change from. Prior to two thousand ten. And I also wouldn't mind. Having a general understanding of how our businesses. Fall into these five categories that most municipalities charge. To see if that's even. Something that we should be considering. I mean, if most, most businesses don't fall into all of those categories, then it wouldn't make sense. And maybe that's why we simplified it, but I just don't know. Because most of them are small businesses. So maybe that's why the larger ones were eliminated. But our businesses have changed a lot since two thousand ten, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Might make sense to relook at.
Yeah, it might make sense to just relook at that, um, especially since the other kind of surrounding municipalities. Uh, in surrounding counties. Have, still have it broken out and we have some fairly substantial businesses here, so.
Good call. Yeah, we can bring back some information.
We've got time.
Before we do the rate of this.
Yeah.
Great.
Hey. One of your orders, commander, is there any public discussion? Sure. Want to make a comment?
Well, I'm done. Thank you for your question. Uh, in looking at the other cities, it seems that one-person businesses, one- or two-person businesses. Which when we consider the changes that happened recently with remote workers, people that are consulting. Uh, the business from their home. Uh, I'm not sure the value for a hundred and fifteen dollars every year that they're getting from the city for. Working out of their home and, and uh. That seems high compared to the other cities. We're charging one-person businesses more than other cities. And perhaps other businesses less, but I'd like to ask that the council consider whether there's value in uh. Having a lower rate for. Those one-person businesses or two-person businesses that are. Don't actually have a presence, they're just looking at it.
I believe that those business, those businesses. They're not buying a business license.
Yes, right.
Those people aren't, they're working remote as even as a tenant and contractor, they're working for.
If you're, if you're a business in the city, conducting business as an entity, so if you're a contractor. You're a business person, you would be buying.
As a tenant, you would. This, this came out when, when one of Ann's, I think Ann's employer reached out. About this. Ann was working from home, but she's working from home for a business that's not located here. She doesn't need, her business doesn't need to get a business license in the city of Leavenworth, just because she works for them, but works for them.
Yeah.
Right. This is their own business or their, yeah.
But then you're right, a ten ninety-nine contractor, sole proprietor would fall under that one-person business.
Yeah, but I, I guess, I'm not sure that's true either. I mean, I was a sales rep for a. A company and I was a ten ninety-nine contract employer, but this company's based, you can be a ten ninety-nine. Person, but you're not running your own business in Leavenworth.
If you are a ten ninety-nine employee, DBA Travis, but master.
No, you can run it through your social security number. You don't have to just open up a business corporation. People. Plenty of people do ten ninety-nine under their own social security number. It's not a business. It's a ten ninety-nine. It's just a.
Right.
A form of tax.
Mm-hmm, right.
Uh, getting eyes on taxes that are paid or due. It's not tied to a corporation. Ten ninety-nine is. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Like, I was a freelance writer for a number of years, working out my houses as a ten ninety-nine employee. I never had to get a business license. I never in corporate.
Right, so I guess to the point, I'm not sure how many. Incorporated ten ninety-nine, do we have eyes? How many people, how many ten ninety-nine corporations do we have that are one people in?
I don't know. We have to know. Yeah, I have not looked through our, our database of, of business licenses.
I think it's part of Ann's thing too, Ron said. I'm curious when, you know, what this looks like.
We'll, we'll, we'll do some research.
Yeah.
Thanks for your comment, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
Okay, I think we got marching orders around that, right?
Yep.
Okay, next item is interlocal agreement with Link Transit over the Glacier Park Lot. Restroom maintenance. Andy.
Mayor, uh, so this is an interlocal agreement with Link Transit. For the Glacier Parking Lot maintenance of the shared building that we built with them. So as a reminder, this has a public bathroom, but also a separate link driver restroom that's included in the same building. Building the purpose of this agreement is to outline both the city and Link's responsibilities in the. Uh, short term, like the janitorial services of the link restroom, but also the long-term maintenance of that building. Um, so we are looking at building link annually. They originally moved into that building in December of twenty twenty-four. We have yet to build them for that, so we'll. Build them starting in twenty twenty-six for our. Everything with eight and then building annually in January. Um, right now, we're looking at nine thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars for them to pay us annually with a CPI increase. Yeah, pretty good. And I'm glad we have any questions.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to execute the interlocal agreement with Link Transit for janitorial services and maintenance. Glacier Parking Lot, Link Driver Restroom.
Second.
Moved by Mike, seconded by Shane. Any other questions? Comments? All right, seeing none. All those in favor, let me see your hand. Passes unanimously. Action item eleven, amendment number seven to Varela Engineering. Andy.
Yes, I'm just putting it up. So this was the email speech day. I'm sorry for the late notice. Uh, we were working with them to make a couple minor edits and we just got it back. Uh, but this is an amendment to the ongoing project that we've had with Varela for years. So this is. All of the USDA rural development grant. Uh. This specifically is an amendment for the Commercial Street Livestation Project and additional work associated with that project. So the total amount that we're looking at with this amendment increase. Is seventy-one thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. Which brings the total contract amount not to exceed amount of them. Up to the roughly three point five million dollars that's included in your amended. Right up, that was the amount today. Um. And again, this includes. Additional um, support and coordination throughout the design of this project. The, the entirety of the project is funded through USDA rural development with any additional funds due out of the city sewer fund. Uh. And. I'm here if you have any additional questions on this one as well.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to execute amendment number seven to the wastewater collection. And treatment facilities improvement projects agreement with Varela Engineering in the amount of seventy-one thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars. Increasing the total contract not to exceed amount. To three million five hundred and seventy-eight thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars.
Second. By Shane, seconded by Mike. Any other questions?
Andy, will you remind me how these costs are being covered?
The project problem? So it's through the USDA rural development low interest loan.
Um, for the whole project?
For the whole project. And then once we. Uh, depending on what the total dollar now ends up being, once we receive contact with the SAC, if we have an advertised this project yet, anywhere maybe. Would be out of the city sewer fund. Uh. Right now, it's looking like we've been too close that we may need some other sewer fund and Chantel and I talked about using a bit. Of our real estate excise tax instead of taking on additional debt service. Uh, our biggest limitation right now in this project, if we do take on additional debt service through USDA rural development. Is that it would have the uh, buy America, build America requirements, which would increase our total construction cost by over fifteen percent. So. That's where we're looking at trying to balance with local funds. Otherwise. We also end up extending our local funds in the long run, so, but. That's what I'm saying.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, let me see your hand. The end passes unanimously. Action item twelve is the. Will Coleman LLC Fleeger petition to annex instead of public hearing? With the annex of annexation of that property, Maggie, what are the rest is?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is probably very familiar to all of you. Uh, I brought this to you, I believe, last month. Um, and it was just uh, Bill Coleman LLC as the applicant. Um. Adam Fleeger came in earlier this year and wanted to annex. It went through the process and went to that review board where they were. Going to hold a hearing with a potential denial. Uh, that came up right as. Tomlin was coming in with this project, so he and Adam worked it out to just. Annex together. Uh, the reason it was going to be denied, I believe, is because they didn't consider Fleeger as to. To be contiguous, this property would be contiguous with the city limits because it only touched at a point. And not an entire lot line. So now the process should go a little smoother. Um, so they are requesting this as a joint application. Uh. Everything's the same as what I previously presented to you. Um, just asking the council to uh, set a hearing. Uh, for this, this proposal as one. Do you have a question for me?
Retain a motion. Again, we're just setting the. Hearing, so.
Leavenworth, go ahead.
Oh.
You have the voice.
The Leavenworth City Council. Moves to accept processing the proposed annexation of parcel number. Two four one seven one one four two zero zero five zero. And two four one seven one 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 three zero three two zero with conditions. Instead of public hearing for the annexation of the parcels for November twelfth, twenty twenty-five at seven o'clock PM.
Second.
Moved by, seconded by, and any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, stick your hands. Any opposed? Abstaining, yes. We have one abstention.
Uh, we don't have to explain why we're abstaining though, correct?
No, you do not.
I thought we passed, we passed an amendment that we, that we have to.
You're supposed to explain why.
Yeah, you have to explain why if you're abstaining. We passed it. I don't know why we passed it, but.
Take the fifth amendment.
That's fair enough. Fine with that. You gotta say something and that, that's okay.
Oh, let's move on to action item thirteen, and this is also made of. A use, uh, approval of use of affordable housing dollars. For Upper Valley Men's duplex project at two forty-one West Commercial. Andy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this is a request that has gone through the uh, Housing Advisory Committee already. Um. The council is being asked to consider granting five fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars from the Affordable Housing Fund. And this is to assist Upper Valley Men with their duplex project on West Commercial Street. Um, specifically to help with the extension of necessary utilities and um. The infrastructure, the meter charges, all that. Uh, it's outlined in your packet. Um, under tab thirteen, that kind of the breakdown that Kaylin provided for me. Uh. Again, uh, the Housing Advisory Committee is, uh. They unanimously voted to move this request forward to council for consideration. Uh. And I am available if you have questions.
Is this project going to be done before the potential rate increase for twenty twenty-six? Is this number going to be accurate?
Yes.
Could this include, oh, they're ready to go.
They, we actually issued the building permit for this, so they are breaking them.
Okay, wow, awesome.
We'd entertain a motion.
Okay, sorry, I have a question. Um. The fifty-eight thousand dollars. Does that come out of our twenty twenty-five budget of two hundred thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Great.
Yeah, the budget of two hundred thousand dollars of what?
We. We budget. Affordable housing every year.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve the use of affordable housing funds in the amount of fifty-eight thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars. For the Upper Valley Men Affordable Workforce Housing Project located at two four one West Commercial Street.
Second. Who's seconded? Oh, right. Moved by Z, seconded by Mike. Andy, did you want to say anything?
Just thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hand. Again, passes unanimously. All right, now we'll move on to council reports. Share it.
I have one this week. Okay, where did it go? Oh, here it is. I have to say that I was quite surprised the other night to be watching television. And uh, the man in a suit that was speaking, I thought. Looking at him, I thought, he looks like Travis, and it was. So anyway, they have. I don't know if you wanted a copy of it, but here's a copy of the bottom one at your world.
Oh, hold on, taking a look.
Okay, um, on the September eleventh.
Very young councilman.
Yeah. In a suit.
Love it.
Who's that very handsome young man?
Oh, he's so sweet.
Anyway, on September eleventh, I attended the mosquito board meeting at the fire hall. We hired a new employee. On September eleventh, I attended the Royal Lady luncheon at the golf course. Our current Royal Lady Sandy Houston gave us a rundown on her journey so far. This week, coming weekend is the Autumn League Festival parade in Leavenworth, the last parade of. Twenty twenty-five that I'm aware of. And Brad Brentley's, Mr. Brentley is not here, so um, I'll leave that part out. Um, September fifteenth, Shalann Douglas County Health. Um September fifteenth, Shalane Douglas County Health Board, along with our regular business, Board Member Bill Sullivan, who has been um opposing COVID vaccine for over a year and speaks every meeting regarding that. He uh had written something out that was legal and um after uh spending a lot of time, more than an hour on this one thing and and people come to every meeting and um it's kind of like the posse and um and uh do not want the health department to give uh the COVID vaccine. Um Bill had a proposal for us that he wanted us to sign and it was to um the health department not carry the vaccine, have people that want to get it go to um Safeway or a couple other places that they can get the vaccine. Um he presented that to us and um wanted us to vote on it and every single person on the health board voted no. Um we want the vaccine um there. It's free for people, so they don't have to pay for it somewhere else. And um so it's just been kind of an ongoing, excuse me, dispute between Bill Sullivan and the rest of the health board. Although everybody listens carefully to everything that's said and tries to take everything into consideration um that um that Bill is talking about. And um he's very religious about it. And anyway, we um nobody signed off on it. Let me see. I attended another mosquito board meeting at the fire hall. Um we're still in the hiring mode. And um there's a big test if somebody wants to work out in the field. They have a big long test study for it. And so a couple of them um have retaken the test and um I don't know, I don't know if I've gotten results for that yet. And then this morning, downtown steering committee meeting at City Hall. I'll leave that to Selby, Zeke, or Mike, or others to go ahead and report on that. And um thanks for listening.
Uh last week, I attended the Parking Advisory Committee. Um we had a guest speaker named Mark Larson with Park Mobile who came to talk to us about the optionality built into our parking system, um our kiosks and the handhelds that staff use while they're going out and doing compliance and those sorts of things to talk about options for how we can build in a locals discount into the system that is not too uh overly burdensome to the staff. And there's actually a lot of options that are available to us in the system, which is going to be really great. And so we spent uh a majority of our committee time uh discussing, just just really kind of kicking off discussions for um how we want to construct some sort of uh local discount option in the community. Um and a lot of that conversation just started kind of big picture um discerning where that um discount boundary is going to be located. Is it the Cascade School District? Is it the PRSA? Is it just the city limits, those sorts of things? So we had a dynamic conversation about that and kind of give some directives to the parking staff to bring us back some additional information to consider. Uh so we haven't landed on anything yet, but there's been a lot of really good dynamic conversation about this. And uh I think we're going to land on on something that's going to be really good for the community. So that's getting getting started.
Steve? Okay, so on the tenth of September, I joined the Upper Valley Museum Board thanking the volunteers for the museum at the Grange Hall. It's kind of neat to use the building for that. It quite a turnout. There's like seventy people there. Uh on the sixteenth, uh Councilman Bernard and I also met with uh Chantal on just nuts and bolts stuff for finance committee uh or not a committee, but the actual finances and how it broke down. It was a good full hour of good discussion and just viewing stuff, so I plan on doing that again. And then I did attend uh for the most part, the downtown steering committee this morning uh. Some of those notes are not with me anymore, but I do remember that um our income from the parking was over four hundred fifty thousand for the month of August, I think Selby can verify that. And I think our our fees, like the traffic fee percentage of that was six percent or less. So uh that's that's doing very well, probably as Selby said, because of the kiosk, it's made it simpler, friendly, accessible, all that. So that's that's doing quite well. And uh the presentation by Somas was really well done, lots of discussion. I won't go into that. Uh maybe Mike or Selby was, but it gave a full picture of end to end things, what was involved, great breakdown and uh a good picture of where we're at right now. So that's the end of my report.
I don't have too much to report, other than had a couple uh meetings with the Economic Development Committee and I'm looking forward to uh scoring the forty six uh applications for the Livermore grant.
Oh yeah, I was there too. Last night, it was it was a good meeting.
Yeah, I'm.
How did I not even remember that part?
No, I'm looking forward to uh you I I got uh, I was on the committee last year and I'm really looking forward to seeing how how Zoom grants can help with the uh with the whole process of of scoring and and um and us, you know, awarding awarding these funds to um the applicants, so.
Is that more than last year? How many do you remember how many were last year? It's about the same.
Applicants?
Yeah.
No, we have more this year.
Yeah, we have this year.
We have, we have about, we have over three hundred thousand dollars in requests. And we have a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars in grants to give.
Yeah.
So.
You guys have a great, a great worksheet on that, very fair and.
We keep, we keep fine tuning it and it keeps getting better every year.
Yeah.
That's the end of my report.
Okay. I attended the um PRSA meeting. Right, we were talking about this. Did I miss a meeting? Had a lot going on, right? Don't need to get reported on that?
No.
We already talked about it, about the fecal incidences in our big discussion?
Oh wait.
No, okay, so I was at the PRSA meeting and he was there as well as the chairperson.
Sorry, yeah, I thought, I thought we already had a meeting.
Yeah, so I know, I do too. Okay. Um you anymore, geez. Um PRSA meeting, kind of the wrap up um at the end of the pool season, right? This year had its challenges, um late start, big time late start, um late finish um into September. And there were some some decent attendance into September. Um so that was nice to be able to extend that. Um we had a pretty big discussion about um the number of fecal incidences and historically and why, you know, and explaining, and I think I think Karen does a good job pushing that out. Um you know, why is it shut down for a full day versus the past? And it's comes down to the saltwater treatment system that we use currently. Um it takes longer. It's not as big of a shock to reset. Um and so we just had a kind of discussion on changing back to a pure chlorine system and then talking about the pool community, people that use it. Do they want to go back to chlorine? And so I think we're going to roll that out in one of the community nights, kind of, or one of the survey, right? The survey, yeah. Asking about chlorine specifically.
I think it's already out, it's out.
Yeah, it's already out, okay. It went out today.
Yeah, it went out today.
Yeah, okay.
I got my wife's backbone.
Um that'll be really, really great to see uh the feedback on that. Um because I, that will that will shorten the fecal incident, excuse me, pool shutdown time. Um so just kind of a catching up what worked, what didn't work. Um and then just how to get feedback with the survey and be positive going into next year.
Yes, I totally, I thought we had the PRSA meeting before our last meeting.
Or two, yeah. Okay.
Uh well, I think all my meetings were already referenced. One uh one takeaway is was really great to sit down with Chantal and be able to ask a lot of questions. I think it's tough to sometimes get down into the weeds and get explanations on the way of all this business to conduct. And it's really nice to to be able to truly try and understand how the city's finances are, because I think it affects decisions we make here for me to know where the money's coming from and what our limitations are. So I'd recommend if you haven't had a chance to do that, um be in the uh junior member on the council. Some of you guys all know more than I do, so it was really great for me to catch up a little bit. Um and Economic Development Committee, one fun takeaway, I feel like from uh the last meeting is that the Zoom grants found out previous years, the way the scoring was, nobody could actually score a hundred percent. So nobody ever got a hundred percent out of their request. Um no matter how fantastic the organization was and the need, um and now because of the way that the scoring's been tweaked, we should be able to award a hundred percent if they qualify and all that. And so um in years past, I understand that some of those funds have rolled over and the desire is to disperse those funds. And so we should probably be faced with uh how are we going to equitably disperse all the funds and not whether we roll some over. I think that's a good problem to have, so. Uh that's kind of nice. Uh and then downtown steering, one thing just for people to hear, if you're listening that are meeting, uh that the Somas is doing such a great job of integrating all of the feedback they're getting from the community, the community events, from the downtown steering committee. They really are uh taking a very proactive approach to all of the stuff they're doing, using and implementing the feedback. And it's really tangible. You can see it
Yeah.
in the results. So it's nice. Uh I was thinking in the meeting today about how you know, the gazebo is really great. I hate tearing things out that work good, but our gazebo downtown right now is a great example of maybe not really well thought out design in that uh it's not really authentic Bavarian. Uh it has water leakage in the back. The storage doesn't really make sense for a lot of reasons. It's not a really great functional community resource that it could be. And so this process that we're going through with Somas and the fact that they're doing such a good thoughtful approach is one that the results should be a much more functional design in the long term going forward. And so I I personally appreciate the uh the work that's going into it. And I wanted you guys to hear that it's going well. So that's an amount of.
Great. That's always, yeah, I heard nothing but good feedback on all of it done. So it's it's fun to have so many aboard that you feel that kind of, yeah, quality from. Um just real quick for me, um I attended our A W C at a retreat um board retreat last week and as well as a meeting. And one of the things we did do was set the legislative priorities for A W C. They always try to package some key things that um usually try to keep it to, you know, four or so three or four, you know, key areas that they would focus on in the legislative bill. And again, um one of them, and we usually, what we'll do is incorporate those as part of what our own original S R will also say, you know, as members of A W C, will support theirs as well. Um and one of them, you'll see, just mirrors all really up close to our housing concerns and and that's, you know, one of their top key points and both in all of the things you can do, um like we've done with zoning and regulatory things that help, but also coming up with um a local option, you know, uh revenue streams and sources and mentioning specifically, you know, lodging packs and short term rentals and and all those things as potentials. So it'll be interesting to see, but I'll be um putting together, you know, recommended some of our own things and then those to bring to you and you'll see them in October um to just make comments and things so that we can move, keep that moving. It's going to be um again, a short session this time. Um and I don't know if you saw the news, but um they're expecting a bigger deficit than the one they've dealt with this past years. Um that didn't balance out, that they're still looking at another billion um in losses partially due to um lost revenues from federal sources, um Medicaid and those things that are dependent on. Um so the the gist of it is, one of the things that A W C is got is a priority first time, I think, ever is just don't let the cities lose ground in terms of taking more away from, because there's a tendency to, you know, um rob Peter to pay Paul type of thing. And so some of the funds that they've been giving to cities, they start looking to pull back on. So um it's an interesting, but it's a sign of the times that one of their key points is don't let us lose ground. Anyway, you'll be seeing some of that. Um and then I just wanted to invite you all and I will send you a link. A W A W C also gets out um and makes district um meetings uh in in the different districts. Our district goes all the way that I, you know, and the board number four, that's all the way to the Canadian border and all the way down to Ottawa, down and county along the river. So it's a huge district. But their district meeting, it will be um on the seventh of October in Cashmere over basically an extended lunch period from eleven thirty to one on the seventh. It's free to any elected official from the third district that wants to go um at mile post one eleven there, right off the um you know, the the bridge there. Um so um I'll send you a link. You sign yourselves up and come and CEO Deanna Dawson um will be one of the ones there, answer questions to feel, to see what the needs are of our district. Um so hopefully, it's an opportunity. You won't get it much closer. Well, occasion, I mean, we could get it to Livermore, but no. But uh anyway, it's an opportunity for you to see, and they'll also have a couple of other legislative, some of their lobbyists that'll be there as well. So pick their brains and hear what's going on. Uh and then my just, my final thing is that you won't be seeing me for a month. And I want to thank first, Clint is going to take this chair on the first uh meeting in October, because Anne is also going to be gone. Um and then Anne will be for the second meeting in October and I'll be in Italy with my bride of fifty years. Actually fifty one years, but it took us a year to plan it. But um.
Twenty twenty didn't didn't happen.
Uh, yeah, right.
Twenty twenty didn't exist.
Yeah, right. That's it, that's it. But anyway, so it'll be um just about a month.
That's exciting, Carl. I hope you guys have a great time and don't think about us at all.
Yeah. I I won't promise that, but I won't think of you much. Um that's all I have.
We'll be sure to take lots of action while you're.
No, I want you to take care of all these housing issues.
Selby? Thanks, Mayor. Uh I'll try to be brief. Yes, the downtown steering committee uh did meet today. Uh there was a great presentation from Somas, as was referenced earlier. Um there are additional meetings scheduled with Grantley, the project engineer, uh the project manager, our city engineer um and the committee on October thirteenth, November third, and December eighth. These are for the an opportunity for the committee to dig deep into certain areas, as was a request from a couple members of the committee uh without chewing up a ton of consultive time. So Bradley will be the conduit of that of of that information. Um so those are three additional meetings that uh downtown steering committee members are attending to attend. Uh the Livermore funds, um I do anticipate having recommended awards on your over twenty eight percent agenda. See, I'm going to be attending a day long mediation on Zoom on Thursday. Uh we are being sued for a trip and claim, trip and fall plan from the summer of twenty twenty two prior to my arrival here. I'm not going to go into any more detail other than to say, um hopeful that we can settle for well below the amount that we to for which we are being sued. Uh Park Advisory uncovered that. Um yeah, our August revenue was just shy of five hundred thousand dollars for the monthly at everything together. And as Zeke um relayed, it's probably the best month we've had for parking infractions as a ratio to our paid parking revenue. It was only six percent where um we've been trending ten percent or more. Uh so people are being, are are more, are able to be compliant with our paid parking program. Um the pool did officially close for the season uh at seven P M Friday. Kudos to Kelly Lemmons. Um, the pool did officially close for the season uh at seven PM Friday, kudos to Kelly Lemons of thirteen for keeping the pool open for an additional three weekends. Uh, three weeks beyond our normal closing date. And the city staff met last Wednesday to discuss the season and start planning maintenance and operations um and improvements for the twenty twenty six season. And a survey was sent out today, uh and as Travis referenced, one critical change that staff is considering. Is moving from a salt water to a chlorine pool. Now, I will know all pools are chlorinated, the salt water pool is a chlorine pool. It's just dosed on a more regular basis than um than a typical chlorine pool is dosed. Um, this change would reduce the time that the pool needs to be closed to recover from an accidental fecal release. And while we will be taking input from the community through the survey and the council and the PRSA board, it's the staff's decision and we're making it. Um, hopefully within the next two weeks. Um, project update, I believe the icicle transmission line project is about fifty percent complete. I thought Grant was going to be here to give a little more detail, um that's what he gave me for yesterday. And Andy has some staffing updates and the repair work on Sue uh, Becky Sabido's sewer easement. Uh sewer line through her easement is uh work is uh taking place this week. Um, the final numbers for the twenty twenty five Recreation Vertical Shuttle was one was seven, one thousand seven hundred and eleven. And seventy five percent of the riders um were from more than fifty miles away. So this is an effective way for getting, it it's a justification for using lodging tax. Uh, we know that the users of that shuttle that we're providing um are eligible, it's an eligible use of lodging tax and. The local, which Shalane Douglas County use, was about twenty five percent and of that, only eight percent were from a school district boundary.
Great, thank you.
Um, just quickly, I had a meeting with Deckard who is doing our um. Short term rental compliance software, we hope to have that up and running by next month. Um, it looks like it's going to be a great opportunity for us to um. To help with enforcement of vacation rentals, especially with the months ahead of us. Uh, so that's exciting news, um Celeste Berry, our senior planner, and I are working on our pop up event at Dan's next week. Uh, we're still working on plans, we're going to have a little booth and try to talk to community members, um it'll be next Thursday from eleven to two. Uh, we'll have some of our uh, some flyers, some posters, uh we're working on a uh. Oh gosh, like a questionnaire to get more housing information from employees um in the community, so hoping to get some valuable information for that. That's all.
Great, Andy.
I like Selby mentioned a couple of staffing updates, we have two retirements next week already. So Manny Diaz is retiring on uh September thirtieth. And he's a facility maintenance worker, utility group first, no, he's a utility maintenance worker, not facilities. And then Antonio Muro is retiring on October third, so we have a Tuesday and a Friday retirement that week. Um, and Antonio is at our wastewater unit. Um, so in that, we're excited to announce that Kyle Grow is our new wastewater tuber plant supervisor. Which has been rebranded to our water resource reclamation facility, the WRFS. Oh, you're right, it's recovery. I think, my brain is hardly working, water, no, it's water resource recovery, so maybe that's what it is.
That's what, that's what Karen's email said.
Recovery, it is recovery, um, which is a rebranding from ecology to try to attract more people to that field of work. Because they told me they don't want their shirts to say turd herders. We also have two new positions, two open positions with those retirements, so one will be for the. Uh, WRF uh operator position and then for the utility maintenance worker position. Um, and then just down on your other thing, study session, as always, I bring lots of fun items too. We are going to be talking about sidewalk maintenance and policy direction from the council, right now it's on the Jason Papagias. So I'm going to see, um, I have a mentor Tom Grafter to talk about this and I'm going to see if he can join, be here just to. Help you get perspective on the legal side of that and why, even though we have it in our code, we still have liability that falls back on us, but. At the end of the day, we'll be looking for policy directions for you. Another fun item, and that's all I have.
Sorry, uh, I just have one, I, Travis reminded me that we had the PRSA meeting after our last council meeting, but. Um, I did invite the PRSA board to our October twenty eight study session and we will be posting that as a joint meeting. Uh, just so they're, they can be present when UVA gets the update and and Selby presents. Um, and then we did talk about um the possibility of having a joint council. PRSA board meeting sometime in the future to talk about future planning, cool.
Alright. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
A major.
Yeah, second, alright, moved and seconded all in favor of the. Good rest of your day.
I don't know, which way do you want to go? Do you want to go that way? This way is the ramp.
The what?
Has the ramp.
Yeah, I'll go that way.
Oh Sharon, I know you want this freedom refrigerator.
You think I want it from my refrigerator? You're giving it back after I cut it out and.